All this. January twentieth, regular meeting of Midland Town Council to order. It's, as I said, seven P M. And I will ask if, well, actually, I think what I'll do first is with the land acknowledgement. The town of Midland recognizes that it is located on land, which is the traditional and treaty territory of the Anishinaabe people. Now known as the Chickewahtri Council comprised of Bosley First Nation, Rama First Nation, and the Georgina Island First Nation. This territory is within the preconfederation Treaty Five and Treaty Sixteen, and included within the Williams Treaties of nineteen twenty-three. The town of Midland recognizes that it is located on land, which is the traditional territory of the Huron-Wendak and the historic whole lands of the Métis. And our town is home to a large and diverse community of indigenous peoples. For those of us joining this this evening, you can watch on channel fifty-three Rogers, or I believe Rogers is also streaming the meeting tonight. So with that, I'd like to just sort of pause for a moment of silent reflection and consider all those folks in our community and beyond who are afflicted with COVID nineteen where I've recovered from and just thought for those folks. Thank you very much, everybody. This evening, we have a fairly light agenda, but with some quite interesting, I think, interesting material on it. So there is the prospect that the meeting will come to its logical conclusion a little earlier than maybe otherwise, but I'm also sure there'll be some conversation around the items on the agenda as well. So I'll ask if anybody has a declaration of conflict or of interest. Seeing none. We have earlier, we sat, we convened a closed session to look at committee appointments to council and also for an educational presentation by our insurer to council. So we're just going to consider those items through resolution and or motion, and then we'll move on to the regular part portion of the meeting. So I have here a motion moved by councillor Cunningham, seconded by councillor Downer, that further to the verbal report of the deputy clerk and confidential criteria-based matrix provided to the close meeting session of council had held January twentieth, twenty-twenty-one regarding committee appointments. Council confirms the following, that Paul Crouch be appointed to the seniors council, that Linda Hillman be appointed to the Ontario Best Butter Tart Festival Steering Committee, that all appointments shall be for a term consistent with the term of council, and that administration continue to recruit for vacant board and committee appointments. Council, you've heard the motion, comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you, and that's unanimous. Next, we have a motion moved by councillor Maine, seconded by councillor Ross, or sorry Deputy Mayor Ross, I beg your pardon. Is the deputy mayor here yet? No.
He's attempting to get in.
Okay, so councillor Gordon, would you care to second? Thank you. So again, moved by councillor Maine, seconded by councillor Gordon. The council receives information, informational update and presentation provided in closed session by Ms. Robin McLevee, Vice President, Public Sector Risk Management Leader, EFL. Any comments or questions around this motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you, that carries as well. So the next motion I have is approval of the agenda. And that's moved by councillor Cunningham and seconded by councillor Post, that the contents of the regular council with closed session agenda for January twentieth, twenty-twenty-one be approved. All those in favor? Thank you, that carries. We also have, I just know here somewhere on this one. So I have a motion by councillor Gordon, seconded by councillor, she's not here, so. Councillor Maine, would you second? Thank you. So moved by councillor Gordon, seconded by councillor Maine, that items and related recommendations contained within the January twentieth, twenty-twenty-one consent agenda. As consent items having been considered by council be adopted. Now, one of the items on the consent agenda is has to do with the statements, the emotion. I got this right, yes, I think so. No, I don't have this right, sorry. Comments or questions? Let's see councillor Gordon has a comment or question, and councillor Maine.
Thank you, worship. This is just a quick one for the C O. On our C I P, there was some correspondence from the eighteenth of December surrounding an attempt to provide some financial relief to the Midland YMCA. And I know Mr. Denno and I had some discourse online or, you know, on email about this, and I committed to asking him about it. Just to try and clarify a bit more. I learned through a newspaper article that an attempt was made to effectively lend some money to the YMCA because they have a deficit for capital and also operational issues. And that that was unsuccessful and that they turned it down. I didn't explain any other details, so I reached out to Mr. Denno and asked if he'd be ready to speak to that a little bit tonight because I know the YMCA had approached us without a financial asks per se, but with the indication that there would be something coming, and it looks like we attempted to reach out to them and do something that didn't work out, and I wanted to know if we could talk a bit more, a bit about that, and if there were any other alternatives for them, because I'd certainly hate to see us lose their resources to this community, Mr. Denno.
Mr. Denno, do you have, can you shed some light on this?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to councillor Gordon, and I'm sure the other councillors are interested as well. I did provide the update in the in the C I P. In terms of timeliness, I wanted to make sure that information was shared if we didn't have a council meeting at the time, so I wanted to take the advantage of that to make sure you were aware of what went on with those discussions. As we were instructed by council, when they made their deputation, staff were asked to work with the YMCA and see if there are any alternatives that we could offer to support them. We were asked to do that as a North Simcoe team, so certainly the other municipalities participated in that, so Tiny, Tay, Penetanguishing, and ourselves did meet with the YMCA on a number of occasions. We also met internally to discuss what alternatives we would jointly be able to offer them in terms of assisting them. And I think those discussions went really well. We did spend some time in confidence, and the YMCA asked us to to make sure this was done in conference because they were talking about their business. But we were able to offer our perspective on their situation, and there were a number of alternatives we did. We did discuss all of those alternatives, and we made this very clear. All of those alternatives required council support. So if we did come up with something that was appealing to the YMCA, our respective, the respective CAOs would have went back to council for approval. So there were no offers officially made. We did talk about a number of alternatives to potentially assist them. At the end of the day, though, the YMCA determined that they could best address their needs on their own. So they thanked us certainly for the insight we provided them on on our perspective, on running the situation. They thanked us certainly for the time and attention that we gave to the matter. We did leave them with if you find you do require some assistance from the municipalities, please don't hesitate to reach out and we'll engage again and see how we can help you from that regard. So in the end, we, the staff did their due diligence, again, across all four municipalities. In the end, the YMCA made their decision on how they felt they could best handle their matter, and it resulted in us not having to come back to council with any recommendation. Hope that helps.
Thank you, Mr. C O, councillor Gordon.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to, you know, get that out there so people could understand the process that we truly, or when I say we, I mean you, you guys, the C O's, made an earnest attempt to try and be ahead of this process because they haven't asked us for anything, and, you know, we are all equally concerned about their viability, so. Although it came out differently while I was communicating online about it, as it seems to be my hallmark, I do appreciate your efforts and the fact that we've tried, and, you know, not that we're going to wash our hands and give up. Maybe they'll come back to us again, but I do appreciate your efforts and understanding that the best thing we could offer at the time didn't align with their needs, so fair enough, and thanks for the try.
I just add to that that tomorrow I have a meeting tomorrow at one with the general manager of Y, Ms. Murray, and she also is setting up meetings with the other four, sorry, three mayors, local municipalities. Give an update as to where the Y is and how they, I guess, plan to proceed. So we'll have a better understanding of where they are in the new year, I guess, tomorrow. Councillor Maine, you had your hand up, I believe.
Thank you. I just wanted to speak to the minutes of the Act of Transportation Committee. There's a motion coming forward, but we're going, I was speaking with the clerk, we're packaging that up for council's consideration. A resident put forward the idea of the pathway between Hugel and Cook to be not just a pathway, but potentially a pollinator pathway. She reached out to me, other councillors, and we've reached out to the high school, we've reached out to staff, and we've reached out to the developer on the Cook side. So basically to earmark basically an in-principle approval of advancing this trail improvements. It is, it is on our parks plan and I believe our multimodal plan. And so we're speaking with staff and trying to kind of put together a collaborative approach of how to beautify a space. It's much more than just a pathway. It's a very popular spot to be hanging out at, and the residents on Hugel and Cook both want to see some improvements on the pathway, so. Look forward to that motion coming forward, but I thought I'd mention it and that the Act of Transportation had discussed it and wanted to put it forward for council's consideration from the Act of Transportation Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Maine. The other matters before I put the motion on the floor, I'd just like to verify that in consent agenda, there is the Middle Bay Landing Development Corporation Annual General Meeting Minutes. And they are amended, you'll notice they're amended, and the amendment is that in the, it was originally suggested that the financials were draft, in fact, they were final. So for council's understanding about what you would be approving here in the consent agenda, those financials were the final from the audited statements. So just so we're clear. So with that, I have a motion moved by councillor Gordon, seconded by councillor Maine, that the items and related recommendations contained within the January twentieth, twenty-twenty-one consent agenda as consent items having been considered by council be adopted. Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you, that carries. See, the deputy mayor has joined us, welcome. So then I have a motion by councillor Downer, moved by councillor Oshewski, or seconded by councillor Oshewski, I beg your pardon. The council resolved into the committee of the whole. Comments or questions around that? Not seeing any? All in favor? Thank you very much, and Deputy Mayor, it's over to you.
Thank you very much, your worship. Welcome, everybody, to your first meeting in two thousand twenty-one, and we have no presentations, but we do have two deputations. And the first would is coming from Principals Integrity, and I see Ms. Atwood and Mr. Abrams are with us today, so I'll turn it over to you. I'll remind you that you have ten minutes for the presentation, and please stick around. I'm sure we'll have many questions for you after, so. The floor is all yours. Thank you for coming this evening, and Happy New Year.
And Happy New Year to you too, and thank you very much, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and thank you, council, for taking a few minutes of your evening for us. I will be doing most of the talking or a few brief words of presentation. I hope not to take up the whole ten minutes. And my partner Jeff Abrams is also available and we'll, we'll try to just go through at a high level and open ourselves up to any questions you may have. It's certainly been a very auspicious day in government. I'm sure many of you were tuned in to the inauguration south of the border, and I think that it bodes well and all of the focus on civility and dignity and respect certainly bodes well. We, I would say that this report covers the two-year period since our appointment as Integrity Commissioner for the town of Midland, and we recognize that there was a bit of a rocky start, I think, initially in the first part of that period, and so a little bit of high-level reminder to really the public because we're, I think, council is very familiar with our services, but from the public's perspective, it's important to recognize that the primary role for an integrity commissioner is really to serve as a resource when members of council need confidential advice with respect to some area that may be unclear. Often, it's something with respect to conflicts of interest or other areas of ambiguity that they need a little clarification on. That's one of the primary areas, as well as providing education and training to members of council. Usually, in the period of following elections, we come in and provide some education and training to members of council on their responsibilities under the Code of Conduct as well as the Conflict of Interest. We had the opportunity to work with Midland to bring forward a new Code of Conduct early in the term, and we think that in the large part there has been really good work with council for the town of Midland. We are the residual function which most people think about for an integrity commissioner is the reviewing, receiving complaints and investigating complaints. We see that as a necessary residual function, but really not the primary area that integrity commissioners can provide service as a resource to municipal councils. But in any event, we, all of that information is set out in the report, which is before you, and I won't drag you tooth and nail through it. You're probably quite familiar with those areas that we, that we function and provide service in to you. The activities that we provide service to really fall into three categories, and you'll see in the report that we talk about those, and one, of course, is policy development, education and training, and we've spoken of that. The next area is really responding to requests from members of council for written advice. And when we do that, we do it on a confidential basis, so members of council can seek advice from us, and we provide that in writing, and it really bulletproofs members of council. It helps guide them when they're dealing with an area where they may not be clear on what they should or should not do. And then if there is a complaint, the member of council has complied with the written advice of the integrity commissioner, and there really can be no complaint follow-through. So it's really in that area, as you'll see in the report, on eleven occasions through the past two years, this is a two-year period covered by this report. We have provided written advice in response to requests from members of council. And so that is what we see as a very important aspect of the work we provide to you. In terms of complaints, yes, we did see quite a number of complaints initially. It has subsided significantly. We had fourteen complaints. And of those, we were able to resolve or what we call dispose of without need for a full investigation and a public report in ten of those. Four of those complaints resulted in full investigations and reports to council, and they were public reports, and we won't go back over the areas covered. That's for that's for the full two years that we are dealing with under this report, or the just short of two years dealing under this report. We would, I want to say a couple of words about matters which we receive complaints on and how we dispose of those. So when we review a matter, we may get a complaint that is operational in nature, and we will refer the complainant to the appropriate department or C O of the organization on operational matters. If a matter is not within jurisdiction, obviously, that's not something we deal with, but often we will receive complaints and we review those and determine that it's something that can be resolved without a full investigation and without a public report, which can be costly. And so we do that. We exercise that opportunity where we can, and in those cases, we provide a reasoned explanation back to the complainant so that they understand why we are not finding a contravention and why we're not moving forward with the report, and we provide a summary of that back to the respondent member. Where we have had to report publicly, of course, we've already spoken of that. We, again, we do recognize that in the first year, year and a half, it did seem we were experiencing quite a bit of activity. We really have observed that that activity has really subsided. It seems to us that there's been an awful lot of really positive learnings and that there's been a lot of very positive adjustments, and we are very hopeful that we will have far fewer complaints over the course of the next period than we saw in the past. It does seem to be transpiring that way, and we're most hopeful that that will be the case. We did have the clerk conveyed that we would be expected to speak to the costs. And so I'm anticipating that that's a question that I will be asked, and so I can tell you that over the course of this two-year period, we have cost, we have spent the time on the four major investigations that were public reported on. About thirty thousand dollars all in. Each investigation, on average, running between six and eight thousand dollars for the time that we put into it. In terms of the balance of the work that we've done for you for advice and the complaints that were resolved, that's advice responding to eleven requests for written advice and the balance of the complaints that were not required to be reported on, eight thousand dollars all in. And then add in the H S T, and that's been our cost over the past two years, so we, it's running about roughly from your perspective, twenty thousand dollars a year. As I say, we recognize that it was a bit of a busy or rocky start from that perspective, from the perspective of individuals availing themselves of the integrity commissioner, and we have seen that subside quite significantly over the past, I'm going to say, six to eight months. And we expect that to continue in that way, so we're most hopeful that it will. Although we do enjoy working for the town of Midland, we're hoping not to see quite as much of you. And we're open to questions.
Wonderful, thank you very much. Any questions or comments with regards to the presentation? Anyone? Mr. Abrams, anything to add? Or sorry, I have Mayor Strathern. Your worship?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. There's been commentary around the notion that the Code of Conduct and the process of the integrity commissioner examining complaints has the potential to be, I believe the word is weaponized. And I just wondered if you could speak to that somewhat, just sort of your sense of whether that's the case or not, and what safeguards are there to ensure that that doesn't happen?
Ms. Atwood?
Yes, that's a fair question. We, we don't observe that it's being weaponized, per se, in the town of Midland. However, we think that certainly one of the best safeguards against weaponizing the Code of Conduct. And we understand by that it's when members of council use or resort to the Code of Conduct or to the integrity commissioner, rather than speaking to each other, we think one of the best safeguards against that is a good communication between members of council, and when there's a concern, we really encourage members of council to try to sort that out offline if they have to have some conversation. It really comes down to communication and civility and respect.
Follow up, your worship? You're muted.
Yes, I know, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Being a little, a little hard to find the unmute button. I think within council, and I would agree that we've all sort of come to a point where we're quite willing to have a conversation with each other. I know that I, well, I won't name them, there's a couple of townships that are having significant issues with members of the public using the process either from the perspective of a grudge or, you know, grudge and debt of that perspective, or just to to get a stage that they might not otherwise have, and, and so that presents a sort of an interesting, to me, an interesting challenge because we don't, other than direct communication with the individual, and then assuming that the individual is willing to hear what you have to say, digest it, and then come to some sort of a resolution, barring that, then I know for some councils, they've actually passed by laws now looking at charging, charging for access, and particular amphipas being abused in some respects, but I can see where the integrity commission component might be. Any words of wisdom around that one, other than the communication base?
Perhaps I could field that, Mr. Chair. The our experience speaking broadly across our client base is that it's actually quite helpful for municipalities and municipal councillors to have their constituents have access to an integrity commissioner because it's really quite a small minority of cases of complaints that we receive that actually proceed to to investigations. It's only in the order of twelve to fifteen percent. And the rest of them, some of the bulk, the bulk of the rest of them might be outside of jurisdiction or relate to staff or something like that, but a good chunk of them relate to some displeasure a constituent has with a member of council. And through conversation or by an explanation or by facilitating some informal resolution, the parties walk away from the process more or less satisfied, and it is true, if you focus on reports, the investigations and reports, they are costly. But I'm sure you've heard us say, and others will have heard us say, we would much prefer to give the advice and head it off and not have to undertake an investigation, so our entire business model or approach to the matters really is focused on education, advice, and informal education, advice, and informal resolution. So we've, we've, well, we've not had the experience where we've at least knowingly been used as a weapon uh, against members of council. Those, those kinds of complaints are are usually triaged out pretty early.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments with regards to this item? Counselor Gordon?
Thank you very much. I I know I've said this uh, at least a couple of times that I've availed myself of uh, principles integrity's advice on uh, many occasions. I'm just trying to think of those eleven requests for advice. I'm could think of five or six of them that are probably me, so uh, you know, I'm probably responsible for four K, sorry folks, but uh, uh, the caveat here is that the advice you get from the integrity commissioner is only the sound, and it's the facts that you provide them on which they rely to give you that advice. So it's not a matter of, uh, you know, cherry picking what you tell them, getting their advice and bulletproofing yourself. Uh, you need to give them everything. Uh, they might give you an honest opinion based on everything you give them, and you follow that advice, even if it doesn't align with, uh, you know, what you were hoping for when you approached them in the first instance. I can say then, I think in all the cases I've sought their wisdom, um, their advice does kind of align more or less with what I was looking for, what I believed uh, in the first instance, and they uh, you know, validated that and I followed it religiously. And clearly where I've slipped up, it's not places where I've sought their advice, uh, it's kind of just where I shoot from the hip and uh, you know, someone calls me a task force, so uh, fair enough. I take those spankings and uh, you know, learn from them. I do want to say that uh, my last eh, go around here, which was the one about uh, you know, the uh, developer and stay in the lane uh, conversation that ensued. I did have a lot of commentary after, uh, with people that felt, uh, you know, either let down by that decision or bewildered at how could that be? And the conversation that I had with everybody that readjusts me after that was that, and I want to get some validation here from principles integrity tonight is we're still free to listen to people's tales of woe. And and issues there they have with the municipality or some service delivery or something they're not happy about. Um, and we're still free to, if we, if we, you know, want to uh, create a notice of motion, which is our way of setting council agenda items and bringing it to council, which could end up in it getting redirected to staff, or maybe council decides to do something on their own. All that play could play out and and potentially was going to play out with the Taylor Drive issue. Uh, but it didn't play out that way because I didn't bring the notice of motion and it got dealt with otherwise. So I just wanted, and I've been telling people, don't stop calling us. It's not that we're gonna get in trouble for speaking to you or or listening to your problems or trying to advance them or help you. It's just a particular set of circumstances in that one that uh, didn't work out well. So I I just wanted to make sure that what I'm telling people and what I still believe aligns with reality, if I could just get some feedback on from principles of integrity.
Um, through the mayor, yes, uh, definitely. That's absolutely, that's absolutely correct. Uh, members of council are certainly one of the purposes that they serve for their constituents is a point of contact, but then the member of council should be passing uh, individuals along in the appropriate cases to the appropriate staff. So absolutely.
I just want to apologize to Deputy Mayor for forgetting that I'm not running this portion.
That's fine. No problem. We're good. Thank you. Uh, follow up, Counselor Gordon? Sorry, I thought I saw your hand.
No, no, that was it. I just, I just wanted to make sure that the takeaway is that, you know, what we're, what we do normally and traditionally I'd be doing is okay. Uh, it's just, you know, there's ways you can, you know, fall out of your lane a little bit that gets you uh, spanked. So um, to 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 anyone that was concerned, oh, no, we can't call our counselor anymore with a problem, that's not the case. And that's what I've been reiterating and hopefully everyone else is getting that from this too.
Wonderful. Any other questions or comments? I see none. I'd like to thank uh, principals integrity for coming this evening and uh, hope we don't get to see you again this year, but uh, only for good things anyway. So thank you so much for your time and uh, we greatly appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Happy New Year. All right. Next, Madam Clerk, we have up is uh, Midland's Age Friendly Community Plan, and we have Ms. Ball to do a presentation from J Consulting Group. Ms. Ball? Welcome to uh, coming this evening, Ms. Ball. Is it Ms. Ball?
It is, yes. Good evening. I'm going to change my name here.
Uh, no, you're fine. Uh, I'll remind you that you have ten minutes and to please stick around, uh, we may have a few ca- uh, questions for you after.
Absolutely.
The floor is all yours. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Good evening, your worship and members of council, staff and community members. My name is Jody Ball and I'm the director at J Consulting Group, a small Canadian consulting firm. I have had the pleasure of working with your community, your staff, the Midland Seniors Council on developing the Town of Midland Age Friendly Community Plan, and I'm very pleased to have the opportunity to speak to you about that this evening. So we can go to the next slide. Before I talk about the Midland Age Friendly Plan, I do want to just uh, take one uh, moment to talk about age-friendly communities and age-friendly planning. Um, it really started as a framework about fifteen years ago. The World Health Organization developed the Global Cities Age Friendly Project, and it brought together cities from around the world, including three in Canada, who had an interest in supporting healthy aging by creating communities that were more age-friendly. And the activities of that project identified eight key areas of community life in which communities can become more age-friendly. And those um, eight activities have become more well-known as the eight dimensions of an age-friendly community through the World Health Organization. And those are the dimensions that you see on that wheel. Hopefully you can see the screen and you see those um, different components in the, in the circle. Um, and it really highlights um, how broad age-friendly planning goes. And also highlights, um, one of the things I like the most about it is that it looks at our physical environments as well as our social environments. So when we talk about age-friendliness and age-friendly planning, we're talking about things like transportation, housing, outdoor spaces and buildings. We're also talking about our community supports and health services, communication, information, civic participation, as well as our social participation and social inclusion. Next slide. So the purpose of our work and the purpose of the project is to identify age-friendly needs across the town and develop a plan to set the town on a path to becoming a more age-friendly community. Our objectives throughout the process, next slide, please. Um, as defined by the terms of reference, were to facilitate an age-friendly vision, guiding principles, identify age-friendly priorities across the town based on those World Health Organization eight dimensions that we just um, mentioned. Um, to conduct focus groups in the community, engage with the community, to consult with the seniors council, to present an age-friendly community plan to council and to provide project updates along the way. Next slide. So our work began in the spring of twenty twenty, um, a very interesting time as we're all well aware. Um, and I would like to commend the town and the seniors council for their dedication to continue the um, important work um, during such a challenging and evolving time. Um, so as I said, we started in the spring of twenty twenty, um, we developed a consultation and communication plan. From there, we developed a community profile, which included a review of current policies and plans. Um, so taking a look at some of your plans, like your strategic plan, your parks and trails master plan, the transportation plan, as well as looking at things documents at the county level, such as the Housing and Homelessness Plan, um, and took a snapshot of demographic and socioeconomic indicators. In June, we began a community engagement program, starting with the development of a robust needs assessment survey. We had a planning meeting at that time with seniors council and officially launched the survey at the end of June. That survey ran for the summer months, and um, at the end, we had a total of a hundred and eighty-eight responses. We also held some telephone interviews in July, uh, with various organizations, including the Family Health Unit, Simcoe County Social Housing, Waypoint Center, Georgian Bay Friendship Center, Age Friendly Simcoe County and Midland Accessibility Advisory Committee. And we held a virtual focus group in July. All engagement was done virtually, of course, during this time. In addition, we also um, created content for the Town of Midland website that provided an overview of the project and identified ways to be involved. Following the first round of engagement, we developed an age-friendly fr- framework. And at this time, we met again with the seniors council in September to review the needs identified and to explore an initial age-friendly vision, principles, and discuss actions. From there, in October, we prepared an age-friendly plan and held our virtual community workshop in November. Um, at that time, we met again with the seniors council to discuss the final draft plan, and the final age-friendly plan was finalized and submitted in December. And that brings us to today. Next slide, please. I would like to take an opportunity to acknowledge that the Midland Age Friendly Community Plan was created with the support and direction of staff and the Midland Seniors Council. So a special thanks to committee members, Frida Baldwin, Judy Cotton, Cher Cunningham, Bride of De Roche, Deborah Diane Smith, Diane Enns, Larry Ferris, and Barbara Nactall. Um, and a special thanks and appreciation to members of the community and organizations who took the time to fill out that survey, attend our workshop, um, and provide insights into the plan. Next slide. Uh, this is just a little quote that I wanted to share. It's one of the many quotes from the survey. And I just wanted to share that with you on the slide there. Okay, next slide. So a key component of our work was to take a look at community needs, and I'm not going to go through them um, in detail this evening, but I do want to just point to um, uh, the needs assessment, the profile uh, that is in the community plan, as well as in one of the background documents, if you are looking for more information. Um, and I'll, I'll just point to the aging of the population as probably one of the biggest needs. Um, so growth in Midland from two thousand one to two thousand sixteen has been fairly modest at about four percent. And while this is slower than the rates for the county as well as the province, the Town of Midland has an older population when we compare it to the county and the province, and I'm probably not telling you anything you don't know, but I do think it's important to point out, and it highlights the importance when we look at our age-friendly planning. That fifty percent of the population of Midland in two thousand sixteen was over the age of fifty, and a quarter of the population was over the age of sixty-five. Next slide. So again, I I'm not going to talk specifically about the community needs identified this evening, but I'll just, um, I have this slide just to show you that um, again, sticking with our framework of the World Health Organization Age Friendly Community Planning, we did take a look at the eight dimensions when we were looking at community need. Um, the survey, for example, focused um, questions on each of these areas and our our demographic snapshot looked at um, various uh, available statistics for each of these areas. Um, next slide, please. Um, so for our plan, we developed a vision with our community, with our seniors council. Um, and our vision is a community where people of all ages and abilities have opportunities to work, play, and live well. Next slide. We have four principles. Um, we are inclusive. We are a community that is accessible, equitable, and welcoming to all. We are accountable. We are com- we are committed to the community to report back on initiatives and updates. We are respectful, a community that recognizes and values all individuals, and we are collaborative. We have a shared responsibility among community members and partners to improve the lives of older adults. Next slide. Overall, we've put forward forty-one recommendation within the Age Friendly Community Plan. Um, these are again organized by those eight dimensions of an age-friendly community. I am not going to go through them this evening in detail, um, but again, just wanted to point that they are there and there's um, they're again organized by the eight dimensions, and if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer. So um, if we can just move to slide twenty now, actually. It's um, it'll be the one titled next steps. One more. There we go. Thank you. So importantly, um, realizing the vision, um, the age-friendly vision for the Town of Midland requires the collective effort of a broad range of stakeholders, including staff and community partners to come together to work towards um, implementing the actions identified within. For example, there are a number of initiatives that are already underway within the town, um, being pursued by both partners and staff, such as looking at public spaces and making sure they're more accessible. I know there's work underway um, with that right now in the town. Um, and I'd like to thank Andy Campbell, uh, who provided insights on the draft age-friendly plan and provided feedback on how some of the objectives are are currently being incorporated into existing planning efforts. There's also efforts underway at the provincial level through health initiatives and at the county level through housing initiatives in particular that impact age-friendly planning in this, in the Town of Midland. So further to the actions identified within the plan, there are some recommendations for implementation that I'll just touch on quickly before I wrap up. And the first is an age-friendly coordinator, and this can be um, uh, within an existing position, uh, staff member, or it could be a new part-time position. The role would be to coordinate efforts of age-friendly planning, liaise with staff and community partners and the seniors council, assist in communication of age-friendly initiatives that are underway within the town, um, perhaps also seek out additional funding opportunities. Um, and the other um, step that I'm suggesting is also a call to action. And what I mean by that is bringing back the stakeholders, the organizations that were involved in the age-friendly planning process to come back, share back with them that plan, the the community plan that has been developed, and see where there are um, some opportunities for organizations to be champions of some of those actions. I've I've done it before where, you know, um, organizations stand up and say, yes, we'd like to take this action on, or I'm gonna bring this back to my board, um, and we're gonna implement this in our, in our next two years, or we're gonna add this to our strategic plan. So sharing back where we landed with our community plan with our stakeholders, and also seeing of where where we can partner with them in the future. From there, I'm suggesting that a full implementation plan be developed, including timelines, um, lead, lead roles, um, resources. I'm also suggesting there be annual reporting, um, back to the community and a more detailed review in five years. And that's, that's it for me. I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you very much. I see a few people have some questions for you. Uh, I'll go to Counselor Maine first and then Counselor Chesky. Counselor Maine?
Thank you so much. Thank you for the presentation, Ms. Ball. That was uh, it's great that you guys have been put together. I know uh, Cher and the seniors council, pardon me, council, kind of am, the seniors council been very excited. And obviously, I'm very excited anytime there's a plan that says we need to prioritize active transportation and other public realm improvements. So that's delightful to see. And I think you, when you break it down, you know, it's little simple improvements, you know, plant some trees, it makes the town look beautiful, but it adds comfort, you know, a couple of benches here and there, little things like that is the attention to detail. Um, the one question that I had is, a lot of this age-friendly planning caters towards um, aging in place, our seniors. Uh, the one question is that often sometimes is overlooked is the youth component, and we've struggled how to roll out youth engagement. And was just curious about uh, how we can do that, and if that has a component in the age-friendly p- planning, yeah, how how we can do more youth aid. Thank you.
This, this ball?
Thank you, Counselor Maine, and thank you for the question. Um, it's a good one. Um, age-friendly planning, um, I would say is focused on all ages. However, when we um, follow the World Health Organization eight dimensions, it does focus on seniors planning, aging in place, with the philosophy being that if we plan for our seniors, if we plan for um, individuals that may be experiencing mobility challenges and so on, that we will in fact plan our communities for all ages. Um, so I like to think of it as a plan for all ages, and that if we're planning for our, uh, again, our, our aging population, we are planning for our community. Having said that, um, there are um, communities that are doing specific youth-friendly um, community planning initiatives, and there's some there's some cool stuff going on, and I definitely see some alignments, but there's also some uniqueness to them. I would say anything that's involving youth planning should involve youth um, in in that planning, and that would sort of be the key difference. You know, it's engaging with youth, this process. Um, while it didn't exclude people of all ages from participating, it definitely targeted our population over the age of fifteen.
Oh, well, that's great. I guess it's an offshoot. It's a thing that we're all Oh, well, that's great. I guess it's an offshoot. It's a thing that we always keep thinking of. And, and the transportation world uses the term "all ages and abilities," and I just love that, you know, bike lanes, sidewalks for all ages and abilities. And I think that's very inclusive. So thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely.
Counselor Chesky?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Probably no surprise that my question was the same one there around youth, so I won't echo Counselor Maine's comments. Just say that I do support a little more use of the word youth, and that plan would be great. It would probably be enough. We can talk about the parallels and the the things that don't align when we get there. But yeah, thank you very much. Great presentation.
Thank you.
Counselor Cunningham?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. This is going to be kind of a question, kind of a sneaky insert of a statement and a thank you at the same time. I really want to thank Jody and the entire seniors council. I also want to thank staff. Andy Campbell worked with our staff to review the findings and the considerations that came about in this report and gave some great feedback on things that were actually already underway, so that we can see, first of all, how on top of things our town is in, when it comes to some of these initiatives. Some of them, as Andy said, are like 80 years out. They're underway, but some of them take a huge budget to put into place. And it's important for our seniors council to be able to see that, and that, that communication with staff and seniors council has been beautiful. It also highlighted, I think, Jody, communication, and I think that's something that comes up in a lot of these plans for age-friendly is how to engage and communicate with our seniors so they know what's going on and the initiatives. And I wonder if you can speak to how that age-friendly coordinator position or those calls to action might possibly pull some of that communication piece forward for us.
Ms. Ball?
Thank you, Counselor Cunningham. Yeah, communication, I think, is, it's so important, but it can also be some fairly quick wins. I don't think there's a lot we need to do to implement some of the strategies that are identified within the plan. I think we've started, again, we've been at this for, you know, I think it ended up eight, what, eight months or so? We have built some momentum in the community. We have created some more awareness of age-friendly planning, what it is. We, you know, we engaged about 250 people in the process. So some of the things I was thinking could be done, you know, initially is to build on. I know we did create a landing page for the age-friendly planning. You know, can we create something similar for moving forward, perhaps populating it with existing resources? One of the things we heard a lot about was, I, I don't know what's available. You know, there, there's a lot of services available within Midland. There's services that maybe not operating necessarily right in town, but that would come into town. And sometimes people just aren't aware. So if we can connect people, that's a, that's a win-win. And it, and it doesn't take a lot of resources. So we were talking about, you know, content for a website, and that might be something that coordinator could help pull together content, and then with the support of, I think it's Randy, I hope I got Randy's name right, to help put that on the website or put out those social media posts. You know, he was super helpful in our process and, and posting little announcements and updates along the way. So just continuing that kind of education, I think would be great.
Follow-up, Ms. Counselor Cunningham? Mayor Strathern?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Fabulous report. It's nice to see people thinking too about beyond just the, the seniors element in the population, although that is a significant component of our population. I guess my question is, we have a number of organizations within the town and external to the town that have been reasonably, I would say, successful in engaging young people in different, from different portions of that age group. Right? And I'm just wondering whether you see any examples of where municipalities would pull them into a sort of a unifying group or committee to look at where the gaps are and then acting on those gaps rather than the municipality necessarily engaging with the young people, when, when these people seem to be successfully doing that. Do you know of any examples of that sort of an approach?
I'm not sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I would say often it's, it's similar to a task force is, is what's often set up. If we're talking about youth or we're talking about seniors, I know Midland has our seniors council. And, and I would say one of the suggestions for that, and I, I know seniors, the seniors council, we met earlier this week, and they're keen to bring together some of those partners that did participate, you know, from health services, you know, from, from the county level, so that we're continuing those partnerships. And I would say with youth, it would be similar. I'm not sure of an organization, municipality that has sort of an all ages. I know some organizations have what they call like a lived experience task force, and that may include, for example, people with disabilities, seniors, youth, perhaps even people who have experienced homelessness. So I'm not sure if that answers your question.
Definitely. I, I, I think of tiny townships. Jayden, young man they've hired, and he's working very diligently with young people in tiny township. They were going to host a summit of sorts in, in town. Unfortunately, COVID got in Midland facility, but the COVID got in the way.
Yeah, thank you for the clarification. Yes. So, as, as, sorry, I thought you were referring to more of a group, like a, an advisory. Yeah, there's communities that will have, so some communities will hire their own age-friendly coordinators. Some will do it through, say, a community health center might have an age-friendly coordinator, or they might have an outreach worker, which would be more broad, that might go to youth as well. Some might have what they would call a community animator, which is somebody that goes out and does outreach and tries to, you know, attend, whether it's a, a youth group meeting or a senior, you know, and, and sort of report back as one individual. I have seen that.
Any other questions for Ms. Ball? Counselor Gordon?
Thanks. It's, well, it's kind of for, for everybody. I mean, we have this plan. It's a fantastic plan. I really enjoyed reading it. It's obviously a culmination of a lot of hard work. I'd like to see this merged into our strategic plan, now that we have this, so that, you know, much like we do with our current objectives, as new initiatives and priorities and strategies come place, we kind of align them with things that are found in this age-friendly plan and make sure that, you know, we've always considered this plan, now that we have it, in our decision-making process. I, I share Counselor Chesky's concern that we don't want to, to have the youth sort of feel like age-friendly means, you know, not them. And, you know, arguably, the, the older folks in our community are seniors. I mean, they bought and paid for everything that we have and enjoy right now, and there's an expectation that we look after them. And, you know, in a cruel stroke of irony, they're the ones that are being taken out largely by COVID-19. So here we have a, a plan that aims to deal with all different ages, but there is a focus on seniors. And I would definitely like to see the initiatives that we bring forward, especially as we're talking budget in the next month or so, how they align with this plan, the same way we do with Parks and Trails and our other master plans. So I, I do appreciate all the time and effort that went into this. I, I wish we had more engagement than the, the numbers, 250 or so that, that participated, but I mean, I think we can say that about everything we try, engagement tends to be pretty low. But we did get that response and clearly put together a good plan as a result. So congratulations to everyone involved, and now it's really up to us as a collective to put it into action where we can financially.
Well, thank you, Counselor Gordon. Any other questions or comments? I see none. Thank Ms. Ball for coming and greatly appreciate your time and, and your presentation was great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Take care, everyone.
Thank you. Next to the agenda, we have a presentation. Yes?
There are, there is a motion with respect to that matter and the one for the integrity commission to receive it.
Okay, I apologize. I don't have them in front of me, would so.
That's okay. I was going to send them off to you, but I was, I was thinking you might not be checking your emails while you're.
You can send them to me if you like.
Okay.
Oh, I got, I think, I think I have them here. I have a, moved by, I have the first one. If you'd like to send the second one, Madam Clerk, that'd be great. So we had a motion that came out of our integrity commissioner report this evening. Moved by Counselor Maine, second by Counselor Cunningham. The council received as information the 2020 update of integrity commissioner's services provided by principals integrity. Any questions or comments with regards to that item? I see none. All in favor? So passed. Thank you so much. And Madam Clerk? I don't have the second motion, but we can come back to it if you like. Or should we hold on a minute?
Um, it's, it'll be on its way in a moment.
Oh, wonderful. I love technology. Isn't it great? So we'll allow that to come through. If it's all right with the committee, we'll come back to the motion as I, as I receive it, but we'll move on to next item on the agenda, which is the update with regards to affordable housing. And it's an update regarding council's task force on affordable housing. We have Mayor McCabe, thank you for joining us this evening. And all right, I see Mr. Labricroy. Did I, I apologize if I got your name wrong?
That's Lebreck.
Lebreck, oh boy, I got it really wrong. All right, Mr. Le- Is your worship, sorry, Mayor McKay there?
There, just, there we are. I think we're now.
Good to see you this evening, Mr. McKay. How are you?
Hey, Mayor Ross. It's a pleasure to be before council again.
Happy New Year. Welcome back.
Indeed. Thank you very much.
I'll turn it over to you, and we'll have a motion that comes out of it for council, but I'll allow you for your presentation. Thanks for coming.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. Your worship, Deputy Mayor, members of council, it's really a pleasure to be before you again, all from a quite a different vantage point this evening. Back in June of last year, you established a council task force on affordable housing. And we have been busy for the last six months answering the task and the questions you set before us. So it felt very appropriate that we have an interim update for you this evening and just let you know what it went up to and what we're looking forward to, at least in the next six months. But before I turn it over to Mr. Lebreck, who's going to take the first part of this presentation, just wanted to very quickly put before you the members of this task force. I'm very fortunate to have very experienced members from the private sector, Mr. Tom Cowley, who is a developer in Toronto and has got an awful lot of development experience. Mr. Ted Phelps, who I suspect many of you do know, is a developer in the area, and he has both built and operated housing and even affordable housing. From council, we have Mayor Strathern, as well as Counselor Maine, that joined us on this council. Mr. Dan Lebreck, who spoke very briefly there for a second, is a consultant who is working with us. He's got a lot of expertise in housing development, housing operations, and has consulted with quite a number of municipal governments. And I'd also like to call out Mr. Rob Elliott, who has worked with us virtually every meeting and been very helpful in organizing our thoughts and assisting us with the process through staff. And last but not least, maybe is myself, I'm very pleased to be the chair of this committee. So with that introduction out of the way, Mr. Lebreck, if you're ready, I'd like you to take the first part of this presentation.
Thank you, Mr. McKay. Thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Mayor and members of council, to present or help present the task force's first major milestone report on this very important initiative. It's very clear to me, this council already has a clear understanding about how its citizens have been impacted by the continuing shortfall of affordable and appropriate housing. As Chair McKay said, last summer, you took the first big step in establishing this task force and giving it the mandate to bring some concrete measures in regards to the strategic priority. In this business case, the interim business case, which was included in today's agenda, reflects the team's initial findings and recommendations. Next slide, please. The business case sets out in great detail the reality of the situation here in Midland. The town is home to many individuals and families that are income-challenged and for whom getting appropriate housing is becoming exceedingly challenging as market forces continue to drive both rental and home ownership costs further away from what is deemed affordable. And the benchmark for that, what's being affordable, is equivalent to 30% of your income. This challenge extends across the full continuum of residents, not just those that are eligible for social housing. The bottom line of all this is that translates over 1,200 Midland households being deemed at some form of risk to their sustainable housing, primarily because of their financial status. Next step, please. In its deliberations and research, the task force came to the conclusion that there is no one-size-fits-all solution that would meet the needs of all citizens. Fortunately, there are already many stakeholders engaged in making a difference, including the county of Simcoe, who has the mandate to deal with social housing. As such, while we believe that it's important, and I'll say it again, it's important for the town to continue to collaborate with all stakeholders, that it should not compete with those stakeholders. As well with its limited financial resources, the task force is recommending that the town focuses its effort on the part of the housing continuum that lies somewhere between social housing and the free marketplace. What is being characterized by many as attainable housing, different a little from affordable, but attainable housing. The targeted cohort is referred to as the missing middle by many municipalities dealing with the same critical issue. So this is not a Midland issue. This is an Ontario and a Canada issue. Residents in this group find themselves not qualified to access social housing options, but who also can't find appropriate accommodation in the free market without making a number of tough decisions. Our near-term efforts as the task force will be to explore the development of at least one project on town-owned surplus lands, and then use those findings from that process to inform refinement of a longer-term, sustainable business plan for council consideration. And that, I would pass it back to Chair McKay.
Thank you very much, Dan. We have the next slide. So the task force, once it, you know, opportunity to meet, decided that we need to focus in three particular areas. And the first one to come out very clearly by our members is we wanted to do something practical, something tangible. It's fine to have a vision. It's fine to have a statement of purpose. It's fine to have a plan. We should all have those things. But with affordable housing, so much is already known, so much has already been explored, that could we advance this whole project and actually focus on a particular instance and do something to help alleviate the need in the short term? So with that, one of the first areas of focus was finding a housing build project. And we know in our heart of hearts that any misspelled it has gone forward with this, it's usually been involved in some sort of a land proposition, that it's provided land, made land available, swapped land, these sorts of things. So in an effort to get really practical, we said, let's not just talk generically. It's not to say, well, we can offer some land. Let's look at some sites that if we were to go forward, would be attractive to a private sector developer, and therefore would give us the information from this development that we're going to need to build the model and come back to council with a hard-edged proposal. So with that, we looked for, through the town's land inventory and came up with two sites that we felt were particular likely to be of interest to the private sector and to use those, if you will, as the initial entry into developing a proposal that we could put affordable housing on. With those two in hand, we were able then to go to and find an architectural firm and ask them, what could we do with this? What kind of affordable housing? How many? What form could actually be considered for these two particular sites? So that's the action that's occurred to date with regard to a build project. We're also well aware, and you've heard in Mr. Lebreck's comments initially, that this is a long-term consideration. If we thought for one second that one project would solve our problems, we would clearly not have understood the issue. It's taken us a long time to get to this position. It has been resolved with many well-intentioned efforts. So we have to prepare for the longer term. So what sort of model is out there that we could use? How do we gear ourselves to provide affordable housing, attainable housing in this case, for the long term and make sure it is available to those who want to live in it for the long term? And the third major area of interest, of course, is we're going to go through this and develop a lot of learnings. We're going to pick up a lot of information, and we must come back not only to council, but also to the public in a coherent fashion, said, this is what we discovered. Here's the issue. Here's the problem, and here's how we propose to resolve it. So as you can see, Mr. Lebreck has joined us as a consultant to help us in this effort. We have developed the statement of need, which I believe you've all seen in the interim business case, I hope you've all had a copy of that. And also we've looked through many of the housing delivery models. Uh, this is where we're really very fortunate, is that so many other communities have already tried to deal with this particular problem. And it's not sort of like there's one solution, just do it and you're successful. Each community is quite unique, they have different needs, they have different resources, different challenges ahead of them. And many have taken different approaches to dealing with providing affordable housing. You go to a community like Canmore out west and they have virtually put the money up, they bought the housing, they operate the housing, and they've been quite successful in doing that. Uh, we're looking at a couple of other communities, Halt Hills right now is trying a model where they're just offering land and seeing what comes forward. The town of Blue Mountains is one we spent a lot of time with, you're probably very familiar with that, but they have struck a housing corporation that guides all of their work in delivering affordable and attainable housing into their community. So there's many models out there and we had to become familiar with what they were before we could come back to council and give you what we're proposing. And lastly, of course, we've got to pay for this. And we know one of our first pushbacks is, don't expect the town to come up with lots of tax dollars on this, so. Is there a model out there, especially with the assistance of senior levels of government, that would help us pay for funding for this housing in the short term and in the long term as well? Next slide, please. So with that, we've come to this interim point, we felt that six months is probably long enough before we got back to you, and that's what's contained in the interim business case. So now we're looking forward to the next six months and we've chosen the period to June twenty twenty one as being a useful timeframe to get us to a point where we can really put the budgets before you, the numbers before you, and the housing models before you. So we've just put this up into two different streams of work, one by the task force and by town staff. Town staff, as we all know, does all of the work and the rest of us sort of take credit for it. On the task force side, uh, we are looking to award the contract for architectural services. So right now there's an RFP out the street looking for an architectural service firm and we expect to have response from that back within the week. And with that information, we'll be in a position to actually write up a proposal for developers. The good thing about this is we'll be able to scale the size of it, costs, the likely inputs required from the town to make this thing work. The part, uh, bullet number three then, task force is implement a communications plan. If there's one area that we really have not explored at all to this point, it's taking this information to a broader community. We know that town of Midland has got to be engaged in this approach to housing. They've got to understand both generally as to what it means, what are the needs within the town and how it's likely to result. And also what does it mean on their street? Uh, what is this housing likely to look like? What is it going to say about the neighborhood? And I know that all of you have dealt with good citizens of Midland on many of these questions. It's important to get the information out there and demystify exactly what we're talking about. Even such a simple term as affordable, if you ask, I think, ten different people, you'll come up with ten different definitions of what affordable housing actually is. In this case, we're targeted on one particular form, but in general sense, what does Midlands need in the broader sense? How much housing is actually needed out there and in what forms? These are the types of inputs that we're going to need over the next six months. And with that information, we'll be able to complete the business case for your consideration in June of twenty twenty one. In parallel with this, the town staff is also going to be engaged. Uh, they have to continue and finalize the outstanding OP appeals. As you're well aware, these are key planning documents, both the OP and the related zoning bylaw. And right now, either wittingly or unwittingly, they speak very clearly to what is available and affordable housing. Where housing can be zoned, the type of housing, what are the features that uh will make this housing acceptable and what will make it affordable? So all of these things bear upon the arguments we're putting forward here. We have to develop a twenty twenty two budget and that also will include the housing commitment. Because uh, obviously it's going to take some sort of input, is it just land? Is it going to be DC forgiveness? Is it going to be fee reduction? All of these questions we will resolve within the next six months. And uh, lastly, and certainly not simply, the work of the task force, there's administrative support that's required here, a little bit of legal support and all these other issues as we put these actual proposals and the final business case together for you. Next slide, please. So that brings us obviously to the, the closing slide, and I'm sure you're quite familiar with these sorts of ones, it's the request that we like to make of council. Quite clearly, you are committed to the work of the task force and helping Midland get the affordable housing that it needs. And we're very much appreciative of that, everyone on the task force, and we look for that to continually period ahead. We're going to need additional resources through this period. A budget of about fifty thousand dollars for environmental studies, legal and communications. So this is first of all, to be able to talk seriously with developers about what's possible on these lands, what it could look like and make sure that we've processed all of the hurdles that we can from our side and also properly to engage the public, whether these are virtual town halls, whether we've got to conduct surveys, uh, things of that nature as we reach out properly to the the people of Midland. Staff time is obviously going to be involved, we value that at about ten thousand dollars. And last and very significantly is the town land assets. As I mentioned earlier, that quite typically in any sort of a development, the land is provided by the town, by the community. And therefore, Midland has got many land assets, which ones can be brought forward and put into a deal, if I can phrase it like that with the developer, so that we can get affordable housing built in our community. The task force, we've got, as I said, reach out to the community and we look for council to be aboard that exercise. This is not something that should be done just by a task force, housing is too critical to the future of our community. And I know that council will certainly be there with us to make sure that the concerns and the issues raised by the community are heard and resolved and that we all understand what we're trying to achieve with attainable and affordable housing in Midland. And lastly, we look for your support and in everything that you do as a council, all of these questions you'll get, people are going to ask you about housing, what do you think about this? I mean, look forward to your support and ask that you help the work of the task force, your task force, in making sure we're successful in bringing attainable housing to the town of Midland. So that is the, the last of the formal parts of the, the slide presentation, it's now open for questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. McKay, Mr. Lebreck, um, for your presentation. I, any questions or comments? I see Counsel Gordon, I'll move it over to you first. Counsel Gordon?
Thank you very much, gentlemen. I really enjoy following the task force videos on YouTube. Um, I gotta say, I love, the one good thing that's come from this pandemic is the accessibility to all of these meetings. Uh, so to be able to sit down at night, crack a cold one and watch these meetings and, and see at the pace at which you guys are are moving this forward, it's absolutely mind boggling, like, anyway. Congrats on that, there's not a single one of us that didn't hear this uh at the doors when we were banging on doors a couple of years ago. And it's only gotten worse since then, the lack of affordable housing. So the, the mission and need for this committee, absolutely, to me, this trumps everything. If, if this could be our legacy, I mean, King Street repaving that, stop and poo going in Georgian Bay, those are all awesome things. But if we could solve the affordable housing crisis in our community, that's the thing that I think people really, really would respect. That we got out of this term. I don't know many fantasies we're going to pull it off in two years, but we're certainly going to, the ball's moving, um, largely due to your efforts. So thank you very much for that. Um, I'm just wondering and reviewing this, if uh, like, where are that, that beautiful green field on Palm Beach Road that we bought plays into the plan? Because we did buy that land specifically for affordable housing and, you know, because it's almost shell already, I guess, we still got to service it to the county, but is that one of the candidate lands like a that we're really looking at? Because I did notice the other ones that were mentioned on your, on your report, just wondering if you could speak to that.
Maybe you could uh share with us what lands you were considering, uh, Mr. McKay?
And so Deputy Mayor, that we started out essentially with the, the full list and I've got to thank Mr. Elliott for helping us with this, but all of the lands, uh, even though we didn't do a full study on them, who are presented to us and very quickly went through them and said, which ones are most likely to attract an interest from the developer? And the, the simple argument here is that we can propose all sorts of things, but if nobody comes to talk to us, it's all stillborn. So we turned especially to uh Mr. Cowley and Mr. Phelps, who have got uh depths of experience in this area and also Mr. Lebreck, and said, what is likely to attract that interest so we can at least start talking to our developers? So with that, we did some preliminary work, came down with a short list of three and said, of these, uh, which ones are we likely to be able to take forward to the development community and came up with that list of two. So uh, to Mr. Gordon's or pardon, Counsel Gordon's question, yes, the Palm Beach Road property was talked about in a number of the meetings. It is a very large property and it certainly uh argues well for the future, but it was just of a scale and of a position that we felt we'd get much better traction from the development community with the two that we are currently pursuing.
You got a follow up, Counsel Gordon?
Well, just that, that, that's a, that's a reasonable explanation for it and, uh, you know, land doesn't decrease in value, so us having purchased it and sitting on it and, you know, continuing our servicing of that corridor uh, and can, you know, hopefully identifying it as a candidate for something in the future is, is good. Um, but it is a question that I'm asked, like, hey, what, what about that? You guys bought that, what's, you're just going to just leave it? Um, so I guess the short answer is yes, for now, we'll just keep accruing in, uh, in its value and, and uh, we'll have it identified for something in the future.
Just that I can just emphasize that point, you're quite correct, Counsel Gordon, that uh, is the second bullet as to what we focused on, is we've got to look to the future. And this is not just a couple of years, these are decades. So this brings in more senior strategies about uh land acquisition, land consolidation, uh, the types of housing, the different communities. And so this broader discussion is the long term horizon. So the, the ones that we're looking at right now are clearly short term, I don't want to use the term quick hit, because I, I think to means the, the effort as we put into this, but what can we start? What can we use to get critical information back and also give us a solid foundation to go forward into the, the longer term?
Wonderful. Any other questions or comments? Counsel Maine?
Well, I have the privilege on sitting on the committee, so I won't uh ask a lot of questions, I just wanted to make a quick comment. Um, when we first started, it thought it was like a hundred and ten meter uh hurdle. It's probably closer to a three thousand meter steeplechase combined with the Hunger Games. Uh, so we realized the challenges and complexity of the unregulated housing market. Um, and so obviously we've identified some projects, but subsequently, there are other things that the town's going to do as we have an official plan and move towards our uh zoning by law. That is the opportunity, the policy where we can start, you know, uh, reviewing and revisiting second units, um, other areas, opportunities for the town to make it more uh amenable for people to expand their houses or infill units, second units, of all the different kinds of second units. And, but again, that is a very um laissez faire, at, you know, allowing others to build. And so I think this approach is, we're taking a very active role with the municipal assets to try to maximize municipal assets and add housing wherever we can. So I, I really like the uh, the uh laser focus, the Gord McKay, Mayor McKay, past Mayor McKay approach of, you know, we worked well with these great team, we've got a really good uh momentum going and as Mr. Lebreck is uh, keeps reminding us, keep bringing more stakeholders on board, more partners, uh, the mayor. And so I think that approach is what Midland always does anyway, so I think that is, that approach is uh very uh applicable to us here. So I just wanted to mention the uh zoning bylaw and what a huge opportunity that is, but that's a completely separate opportunity where we can address a lot of the planning concerns uh for housing, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Maine. Uh, Mayor Strathern?
Uh, thank you Deputy Mayor, uh, I'm just going to make a couple of comments as well, and they sort of are pertaining to Counsel Gordon's question. Governments don't build houses, industry builds houses. And so the approach is basically to look at how Midland, which is not mandated through the municipal act to deal with housing, really, we're not a separated city, county typically is the how, the vehicle that housing's dealt with. But Midland does have a, clearly, uh, you've seen in, in the report from the committee, an issue around housing over a thousand residences in town. And this, it, it, people tend to look at it from a purely a um um, a housing lens and a, a social responsibility lens, but there's also an economic development lens that you have to look at this through and it's, we do have a service based economy, tourism, uh, retail, hoteliers, restaurants. And the folks that work in those areas are finding it more, more and more and more difficult. So, but to to what we've seen, I believe, uh, the committee has seen is that people, if they take a gradual approach to it and understand the relationship that needs to evolve between the municipality and those who build, do build houses and what we can and can't do with those people, uh, we can start to grow into um larger projects. And when you look at the Palm Beach site, you may, for example, there are tranches of funding coming down from senior levels of government and they flow through the county, so you start to build a relationship with the county. And you start to put a larger project in, for example, the Palm Beach property as you build out the infrastructure and get the proper zoning and uh, official plan designations and so on. So Palm Beach does figure into it, but I think it uh, we really do as a municipality, just getting into this, take these baby steps, then you start to walk and maybe start to run. And that starts with the projects that the committee has suggested uh that we work with initially. And then build out, you'll notice on page, I think it's page eleven of the committee report, uh, we talk about cost, risk and impact. And it goes from advocacy all the way up to a housing corporation and going to that housing corporation is a pretty big step. And so I think as we go through that continuity, that continuum of cost, risk, you're going to hit a sweet spot where you'll work for a while and, and uh, until you really understand the implications financially and otherwise of that, that particular chart and going to a um corporation, uh, Blue Mountain, town of Blue Mountain. Uh, I think there were twelve years before they actually reached that point. Um, so I've, that I think is, is the um long winded answer to your question about Palm Beach. Sorry to be so long winded, but I think it, it required that to give us some context too.
Thank you. Any uh sorry, cut you off, uh, Mayor Strathern, uh, any last uh remarks, uh, gentlemen, before we close this up? Mayor McKay or Gordon?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I think, uh, no, it's, it pretty well stands on its own. Most of the details you can see is in the interim business case, the uh PowerPoint was rather light on any facts and details. Uh, we did that very purposely to make sure you saw where this is headed and what we intend to do. There's still a lot more information, we're very much looking forward to response from the architects and from discussions with developers that we could then have and get really down to the nitty gritty as to what the costs are, who operates it, what we can expect in terms of revenues associated with it. And give council the option in June, decide whether they want to take on an attainable housing project in this term of council and also how we gear for the long term.
Wonderful. Well, thank you, gentlemen, for coming this evening. We greatly appreciate the presentation and uh we uh greatly appreciate all the hard work on the, from the committee, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
And we have a motion uh committee that came out of this, um, moved by Counsel, uh, Counsel Dowler, second by Counsel Gordon, that uh staff report CSR dash two thousand twenty one dash one update regarding council's task force on affordable housing dated January twentieth, two thousand and twenty one be received for information. All those in favor? Wonderful, so moved, thank you. And uh, we have a little paperwork that we need to uh uh finalize, move, this is from a, a previous presentation uh, with regards to age friendly community and moved by Counsel Maine, second by Counsel Cunningham, that council received the age friendly community plan presentation provided by Ms. Jody Ball of J Consulting and that council adopt the Midland Age Friendly Community Plan as the Age Friendly Community Plan for the town of Midland. Any questions or comments with regards to that item? All those in favor? So carried, thank you. We'll move on to the next item, which is uh our COVID nineteen update, and I'll turn it over to Mr. CEO, Mr. Dino.
Thank you Deputy Mayor and uh, members of council appreciate the opportunity update you on, on everything that's going on at the town in terms of uh, the COVID situation. And as we all know, we are uh in a provincial wide shut, shutdown with the stay at home order. Certainly since the start of the years, um, nothing has slowed down, everything continues to be um pretty uh, pretty complicated in terms of figuring out how we, how we deliver services, but I am happy to say that we are finding a way to continue to do that. Um, you've seen some announcements that we certainly made, that we are, are not allowing people to walk into town uh, to hall to receive services, we will serve them though by appointment. And um, just as a reminder to the public, if you do come to the town and expect to get in, we will not let you in. And just as a reminder to the public, if you do come to the town and expect to get in, we will not let you in. We will ensure that we provide you with either an appointment to return and get those services there. Or we will try and do it virtually with the staff that we have in place. And we've been able to do that successfully a number of times throughout the pandemic. We want to make sure that we're certainly encouraging people to only go out for those essential things that they need to do. But we will accommodate them to to help get the services that they need. So that's certainly taking place at town hall and I appreciate everyone's patience in handling that. We're continued and understand exactly what essential services is, is what does stay at home mean? How do you enforce those things? I think it's become clear over the last week. How that will be handled. There's still some fine tuning that I think all the municipalities are are again still trying to interpret. Some of those are in the planning and building area, but I think we're we're in a good spot now where I think we can deliver good guidance to the to the people. Who want to understand what services are available. The regulations continue to get updated as does the guidance from from the health authorities. So all of that's starting to settle and it's pretty typical of what happens with a with a major announcement like this. The announcement comes out and then it takes about two weeks for all the specific guidance to to trail it. So we're in a position now where we think we've got good interpretation. One of the changes we also made those as part of the shutdown and stay at home order was we took a look at our rec center facilities. The ICE and the and the gym are closed. However, we're still offering services to the tenants that are in our building. As you know, we were providing services, some tenants who can provide essential services during this lockdown. So we've got some staff who will remain there to keep the facilities available and also do some work in anticipation of reopening. When that may be, but we did take the opportunity to redeploy some staff to some other areas that we thought we could use their assistance. So there'll be an announcement that goes out tomorrow, certainly in our website, but we made council and staff aware. We worked our bargaining units, so really want to thank Opsu and IDW to for their assistance to to allow this to happen. Was with their cooperation that we're able to make these adjustments and certainly to our staff who've been phenomenal and making sure that. One, they've got the skills to be able to be useful in the other areas, to being responsive to making those changes. And certainly for the the teams and all those areas that are receiving those staff to be in accommodating to them to their schedules. So those people from the rec center have been redeployed into operations. We've got one person who's going over to assist on the bylaw front and we've got some people assisting on the planning front, which are all very active areas. So all welcoming the additional assistance that that will be provided from that perspective. It did result however, in some layoffs and again, that goes through the bargaining process. So both three people were laid off during the process, which is unfortunate, but we do hope that's temporary. And but it all depends on on what will happen with the situation. So we'll continue to watch that very closely. I think we all know how serious this is. Certainly in in Midland, our numbers, if I've checked our numbers today correctly, we're in a hundred and sixteen cases. We were at sixteen cases before December. So through December to now, we've seen a hundred cases in our community alone. So it gives you some appreciation for how quickly this thing can can catch fire. Unfortunately, we also saw five deaths, you know, in Midland alone. We've seen eleven deaths in the North Simcoe area and it continues to wreak its havoc. So quite a serious situation that hopefully will get under control. Getting entered control, I think, as we all know, that that glimmer of hope is certainly what's going on with the vaccination front. Over thirteen thousand people in Simcoe, Muskoka have been vaccinated. We did receive an update from county that I believe ninety percent of residents in long term care have been vaccinated. In in Simcoe. Believe that was the Simcoe County. So again, tremendous tremendous work being done there. It requires people to be redeployed in the vaccination front. I think there's been an overwhelming response from from retired people in the in the healthcare profession who have volunteered to assist on the vaccination front. We just need to get the products, obviously, to get them in the arms, as everyone says. So that's where we are in terms of handling our services. The enforcement side, I I'll I'll comment on that as well because we're we're always trying to make sure that. We're we're educating, but also enforcing what's what's going on in the public to make sure that those things are going on. So we work very closely with with our OPP colleagues and that on the on the bylaw front is pretty active. Since November fifteenth, we've issued over two hundred and eighty two tickets, we've done twelve toes. So we really don't want to do that to the public and inconvenience and there's not some happy people when you tow their vehicles. Or give them tickets, but in order to be efficient and make sure we're we're taking care of our services, we need to do this. To do this. So please make sure you you move your vehicle so we can get around and and take care of the facilities. So I think that's the extent of the update, but happy to take any questions if there are.
Thank you very much. I'll go to Council Maine first and then Council Gordon and remind that we try to keep this to COVID nineteen questions, please.
Certainly, thank you.
My mistake last time, by the way.
I was just looking at the weather and the next couple of weeks look like they're going to be pretty cold. And the question is warming centers. Looks like the Simcoe Muskoka Health Unit has an updated guideline about warming centers. Unfortunately, a lot of our warming centers were our municipal facilities that are not open. I believe there must be other ones in town. Is that something that? That we the onus is on us to provide warming centers in cold extreme weather events?
Mr. Dino?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you Deputy Mayor and to to Counselor Maine on on the question. Yes, that is one area that. You know, municipalities are struggling with a little bit. You know, there there are some traditional areas that are typically used for warming centers that just aren't available. It is in fact, one of the the opportunities I think we will have with our rec center. We have been able to accommodate some individuals who have come there during. You know, very frigid times to allow them to have some space to warm up. So we'll continue to do that. We'll we'll make sure we we check in with our partners in the community, make sure that they understand that. It is one of the reasons why we want to keep some of our staff available at that site to have the flexibility to do that. Quite frankly, there aren't many other spaces in the town that that can offer that. The more traditional ones aren't just aren't able to open. So that is one, one of the benefits of having that facility.
Council Gordon?
Thank you very much. I'm really happy that we're able to redeploy those staff. You know, we survived round one of this pandemic, not having to, you know, lay off or or terminate anybody. Doing meaningful work for them that needed to be done. Arguably, we didn't call back some of our seasonals, but we were able to get them back later on. So I'm very happy to see this news that, you know, we're able to keep the people employed as much as possible. But nobody wants to go on the on the, you know, the financing from the government. It doesn't replace your job. Speaking of COVID in our computing community, I think one of the biggest challenges I find in, you know, taking people's messages online primarily. Is people don't feel the connection. They don't know somebody that had COVID or it seems like the numbers are overblown. And there's all kinds of people that subscribe to the wacky theories and the conspiracies out there. I just want to share personally that, you know, we lost, well, we've lost many people, but we've lost Jack Charlebois. Who was a thirty year veteran of the Midland Police Service Sergeant Jack Charlebois and and we lost him late December due to COVID. Yeah, sure, he had underlying health conditions, but were not for COVID, he'd be back home recovering from his broken hip. But he got hospital acquired COVID and died just bam like that. And we have, I have members of my direct family that are, you know, one of the, they all tend to work in healthcare. And they're suffering with COVID nineteen right now. They're not in the hospital, but they're at home with this new variant. And most of the family has it, you know, so we're delivering groceries and everything to them because they can't leave their homes or go to work. COVID is in Midland. People are dying from it. People are sick from it. Like I just can't overstate this. I still have to go to work with my job, so I'm still physically going to work. I work remotely one day a week, but if you don't have to to leave, don't make some wacky reason why it's important to leave your house. Stay home and don't catch COVID and even worse, don't spread COVID because you might be a spreader and not even know it. So I just want to call out that, you know, absolutely. Respect all the people that still have to go out there and work through this and we thank you for that, all of our frontline folks. Remembering Jack Charlebois, you know, the first friend I have that, you know, died of COVID nineteen. And we have other, you know, people in my family that are suffering through it. I'm I'm hopeful they're gonna pull through it and I'm sure other other of you probably know somebody. It's gotten real in the community. And, you know, we need to recognize when stay at home, even though the wishy washy news from the or the rules from the government don't seem to make sense. You know, I'll even be the first guy to say it like so ambiguous. It's left up to you. I think we all have common sense, so we know what's important, what's what's absolutely necessary and what isn't. And we need to start listening to that little voice in our head and not trying to find reasons why we need to be out of our houses. That being said, I wouldn't mind knowing if we've successfully laid any COVID nineteen related by law charges. I know OPP does a lot of that, but we also have our bylaw officers that have been empowered with that as provincial offenses officers. Have we laid any? And if not, I get, I now understand that we're having a a position slide over to be an ambassador. But quite frankly, I think we're kind of beyond the ambassador time. If people don't get it by now, then it's time for a ticket. Like, this is not new. We've been living through this for a year and it's only getting worse. So just wondering if we're stepping up our enforcement and, you know, laying some paper.
Mr. CEO?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you Deputy Mayor and to Counselor Gordon. The enforcement side, I think we've got some good clarity now and working with the OPP and. And the enforcement community. I know we, there's been a lot of discussion with the health units about educating people on on the effects. And I think what you're seeing just in general is there's a bit of a shift into. The education can only go so far. I think you're gonna have to enforce much more strongly. You know, what what's happening out there. So I think you're gonna start to see more of that. I know the health unit itself is is getting around to some of the areas where we've heard some of the complaints, like the malls. Unfortunately, you know, we're we're gonna be start patrolling areas like Toboggan Hills and skating rinks. And that's that's again, areas that hopefully the public will patrol themselves. But if if we are gonna see congregations, we're gonna have to issue warnings. And if the people aren't listening, then we're gonna have to ticket them. So I think it's it's one of those things that's going to continue to evolve. But I think if if the predicted numbers continue to rise as 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 everyone's predicting. I think there'll be a sterner approach to to the enforcement side.
Any other questions with regards to COVID nineteen update? I don't see any. Mr. Dino, thank you very much for your time, sir.
Thank you.
I'll ask at this time if council has any notice of motion to bring forward. Mayor Strathern?
Thank you Deputy Mayor. I'm gonna be bringing a notion, motion rather forward for consideration by council at the next meeting. We'll look at instructing staff to look at. The ability of operations to continue winter. Winter operations on Fourth Street north of Dominion, between Dominion and Bay. Were we to close? Sorry, Fourth Street. At the north, north, north portion or at the top of the hill at Dominion. So to the, I'm gonna ask that they look at a putting a a permanent closure in there. Or at least a temporary closure to see it with the effect of it and to to look at the impacts on winter operations. And if they're not significant, then ask council to endorse the closure of fourth. Because when we look at. Let's drive down the street and every house has a sign, please slow down, please slow down. The number of accidents that have occurred at Hugo and and forth are, one day, they're gonna be fatal. They've come close, I guess, a couple of times. So people aren't listening and the bulk of this traffic is basically redirected. Seems that you have a straight line to to employment centers in on on Fuller Avenue in Better Time Machine. And, you know, we've clocked people at on on Fourth North of Bay Street. Approaching a hundred and forty kilometers an hour. It's just crazy and the and the people on Fourth Street North of Bay. Are are being are engaged in 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 traffic accidents because people are driving aggressively, speeding. And we need to slow it down.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Your Worship. We'll look forward to that motion and we'll discuss it at our next meeting. Counselor Gordon?
Well, I mean, kind of made the case for it. We could by majority just take that motion tonight and and, you know, make it happen. Like, no, we're not closing the street tonight, but we're at least we're directing staff. Why push it off for two weeks and kind of just made the pitch?
I think it's important for the public to have our input and follow procedure.
Oh, fair enough. It'll show up on the, yeah, you're right. Okay, I did. I got a question on it, if everyone.
Please.
So I Counselor Maine. I think you in some of the emails that we were involved back and forth, these are like friendly emails, by the way, just for the public's consumption. This was a the suggestion that Mr. Simmons, Ted Simmons name be added to the list. Because there was some suggestion that, you know, perhaps a park or something be named after him. And and I think in one of your responses, you said that you'd seen his name on the list and I'd made a couple of inquiries of a clerk, but I might, you know. I make lots of inquiries, so maybe they slipped through the cracks and I didn't hear back. Because if he isn't on the list, then I'd like to make a notice of motion to get his name on the list of candidates. But if he is, then clearly I'm not gonna do that. So perhaps you can shed some light, Counselor Maine.
Well, I I believe I saw his name on the road naming document when we were discussing Rick Laney Way. But it sounds like staff has responded to the resident who inquired. That were look, looks like staff are looking at two policies, they're reviewing the road policy, but also naming policy. So perhaps the notice of motion is not required, but I will check because, yeah, I'll check.
Well, we'll follow that up. I think we have some time on that one, Counselor Gordon, but your question's heard and we'll make sure we get an answer back for you. Is that fine or did you have a notice you'd like to bring forward, sir?
No, it's it's fine. Like, there's no, I don't want to make a notice for the sake of the notice, though. If it's if his name's on the list, then I'm good. I'll wait.
Wonderful.
Sorry Deputy Mayor, I don't have the ability to raise my hand and I apologize for interjecting, but I do believe that Mr. Simmons's name is on the road naming list.
Sorry, I missed the last part. Madam Clerk?
I do believe Mayor Ted Simmons, former Mayor Ted Simmons, that his name is on the road naming list or the street naming list.
Wonderful.
I will definitely check, but I I'm pretty sure it's there.
Okay, we'll verify that offline and we'll make sure that if it's not, that we'll bring a notice of motion forward like Counselor Gordon's request. And we'll make sure if it isn't, we'll make sure it is. So that's by Counselor Gordon.
Absolutely. I just committed to doing that. Perfect.
Wonderful. Any other notice of motion for this evening? I see none and we will move on to announcements. Anyone have announcement they'd like to bring forward to council this evening? I see none. I I had one if I could, but I'll move it to Counselor, sorry, Mayor Strathern?
Thank you Deputy Mayor. I just want to, it really probably should have come up in the COVID nineteen update. But both the premier and Minister Clark from Municipal Affairs have engaged municipal leaders. Mayors on two occasions this week to emphasize. The imperative that people stay at home, as Counselor Gordon has said, they need to stay at home. And whatever rationalizations you make around, well, how, you know, it's sort of not really specific. Stay at home is pretty clear. It regardless of what you might think, stay at home means stay at home. And the they they they're very, very, very concerned. That if we don't adhere to this, we are going to be in a serious world of hurt before those vaccines actually get into the public. And it's pretty clear that even even until you get to herd immunity, which they're saying is seventy seventy percent plus. You're going to, you really should be, and the program, they've launched an initiative is basically stay at home, stay safe and save lives. And those lives you're saving, to Counselor Gordon's point, are friends, family, relatives, neighbors, colleagues. You just don't know. So I can't emphasize enough, sitting here, looking at what the municipality is doing in terms of locking down. Appointment only, shifting resources and so on. It's it's a serious matter for those who don't believe. Give your head a shake. It's real and be prepared to just follow, say, you know, wash your hands, social distancing. Wear a mask and and if you have to go out, follow those. And we've been very fortunate in in North Simcoe, as the CEO has said, in holding those numbers down. Well, let's keep it that way. I know there's there's been a blip, but let's keep it that way. So I really encourage all residents to stay home. If you don't have to go out, there's no reason to go out. Buying your groceries, okay, mediscap medication, okay. Otherwise, stay home.
So thank you. Thank you, Your Worship. Did I see Counsel Ocheski? Counsel Ocheski, it's all yours. I see it's one nothing Oilers.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I'm not reporting on the leaf came just yet.
I just wanted to announce that I will be working with the Guest House Homeless Shelter on Coldest Night of the Year Walk this year. So I've committed to getting the Town of Midland team together this year. I've got Counselor John Maine committed already. No surprise that he signed up for the walk. I think we've done it every year since we've been on council together. So they are offering tukes and stuff, but it's a very unique time, so we won't be delivering all the tukes, and we won't be gathering to do the walk. Everybody's encouraged to do their walk on their own. There is another council meeting before the walk on February 20th, so I will provide more details at that time. But if you'd like to sign up for the team, reach out to me through social media or reach out to any one of the council members that can connect you to myself or Counselor Maine. But we'll be supporting the Midland Guest House and doing the Coldest Night of the Year Walk again.
Thank, thank you so much, gentlemen. Great cause and great work. Thank you. Any other noticeable, sorry, announcements this evening? Counselor Gordon?
Just the quickie that the second meeting of the Homelessness Action Committee, also known as the HAC Committee, is Thursday, the 27th, I think at 11:00 AM. And it'll be on, streamed online. So folks that are, you know, interested in following the developments, please watch us then. If you can't watch us live, you can watch us after the fact. This will be my first meeting of the two. It's kind of embarrassing I couldn't make the first one. But I will take time off, like, holiday if I have to, to make sure that my work schedule doesn't interfere with joining this one. So please, please join in. This is a tandem effort, nowhere near the cadence of the, you know, the Affordable Housing Committee, but it's a tandem effort and we're trying to deal with and focus on, I think right now, the COVID-19 pandemic and its impacts on service delivery to homeless folks. That's a critical one because it's, you know, that's the clear and present danger. So please tune in because I'll be asking questions, not teaching anything, and we'll all learn together on what we can do as a municipality. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Gordon. Any other announcements? If I could, I'd just want to give a shout out to a gentleman and Marco Mancini. You may have heard in the news yesterday, donated $5 million to our local hospital, Georgia Bay General Hospital. So I, I just wanted to say thank you to the Mancini family. And what a, what a donation, and it's going to go a long way to keep our community safe. So thank you so much. Thank, I like that, Counselor Gordon. But yeah, it's amazing and what a family. And I've had the pleasure of meeting Mr. Mancini a couple of times. He's been involved, Glenn Howard Golf Tournament over the years, and he's, for a gentleman that moved here to just have a cottage, the impact he's had on our local hospital is unbelievable. So a big thank you to him and his family. So I thought it important and a happy new year to everyone in Town of Midland. Thank you. I'll move on. Unfortunately, Your Worship, I don't have a motion to get us out of this committee. Maybe you do, but if you could read it, we can, we can move on to the formal session.
I have one here. It's moved by Counselor Downer. Seconded by Counselor Maine, that the committee of the whole rise and report. All those in favor? Thank you. That carries. With that. We have a motion by Counselor Gordon, seconded by Counselor Cunningham, that the recommendations of the committee of the whole for the meeting of January 20th, 2021 be adopted as resolutions of council. Comments or questions from council? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you. That carries. We do not have any motions for which notices were given. I have therefore a motion moved by Counselor Downer, seconded by Counselor Gordon, the bylaw 2021-2 being a bylaw to adopt proceedings of the regular council meeting. It's just a second. Here we are. Beg your pardon. Amazing what you forget in the space of three or four weeks. Moved by Counselor Pro, seconded by Counselor Ochesci, that bylaw 2021-1 being a bylaw to enter into a transfer payment agreement with Her Majesty the Queen in Rite of Ontario as represented by the Minister of Transportation for the province of Ontario for municipal transit enhanced cleaning be passed and enacted. Comments or questions from council? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. That again carries. The contributory bylaw moved by Counselor Downer, seconded by Counselor Gordon, the bylaw 2021-2 being a bylaw to adopt the proceedings of the regular council meeting with closed session, L. January 20th, 2021 be passed and enacted. All those in favor? Thank you. Finally, by Deputy Mayor Ross, seconded by Counselor Cunningham, that this regular meeting of council with closed session be adjourned at 8:57. Oh, sorry, Deputy Mayor?
I just have one thing to add. How about those Buffalo Bills? Let's do it this weekend, boys. Sorry, I had, I had to do it.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Oh, here we go. We have a dissenting. We have a dissenting on that one. That this regular meeting of council with closed session adjourned at 8:57 PM. All those in favor? Thank you and happy new year to all of you. I hope it's a happy and healthy one, mostly.
Happy new year, everyone. Thank you.
Take care. Good evening.